Good evening and welcome to the City of New Franklin Council meeting. We're going to start off our committee meetings, start with the Finance Committee, Mr. Cox.
Thank you. We will open the Finance Committee at 6:01 with Resolution 24R59, a resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into an agreement with MAS Financial Advisory Services LLC to serve as registered municipal advisor for the city in declaring an emergency. There's a little bit of information to this. Mr. Mayor, you want to just go ahead and...
Yeah, thank you. Well, this is a piece we've explored before, and it's depending if and when the city gets into a situation, if they ever decide to take on debt or issue bonds, et cetera, we're going to have to have this piece in place, a registered municipal advisor. So with, in anticipation of things that might happen once the sewer gets in and developers start to talk to us and those types of things, we wanted to, we felt this was the time to explore. We talked with, the resolution recommends MAS Financial Advisory Services. There is a fellow, Matt Stazinski, is the principal, that's who we met with. And I will tell you, well, let me tell you, we reached out to two other firms, and both of them we had talked to back in 2022, Bradley Payne and also Baker Tilly. Bradley Payne gave us a proposal in 2022 of $39,000 for the services, which I'm going to talk about here in a minute. And Baker Tilly, their proposal was an amount of $30,000. I talked to individuals from both of those firms, and they were going to get back to me. And I said, "Well, you know, he gave us a proposal a couple of years ago, maybe you update that one." And I didn't hear back from any of them yet. I probably will at some point, but it's been a couple of weeks. Meanwhile, we reached out to MAS Financial Services. We had some, we received some background on them. There is, there is an Ohio Municipal Advisory Council that consists of members of municipal advisors. And this group is ranked second in the top 10 on that Ohio Municipal Advisors Council. First is Bradley Payne, and number four was Baker Tilly. So we knew we were in good company with this group. They, he is, Matt is a certified registered municipal advisor, he's registered with the SEC, also with the Municipal Securities Rules Board. And the proposal, as you can see, would be to prepare a financial analysis after a review of our financial resources. This would include best practices, recommendations, and a plan of finance. And he will then prepare a draft finance plan to be reviewed in staff, and then a final recommended plan to be reviewed by council. The annual fee, his fee is $12,000, and it's an annual fee. And included in that fee is not just the preparation of the reports that we're talking about, and that initial financial analysis, five-year projections, et cetera, the things you would expect to get. Following that would be a periodic review of that, these are some of the elements that are in the proposal. Discuss and review economic development projects with us. Consider and suggest financing options and investment options. Susan and I met with Matt and just a couple of conversations. We're both very comfortable with him, he's very knowledgeable. There were things that he said initially when we started talking about potential municipal development. He's knowledgeable and fluent in tax increment financing, that's a big piece. We talked to him about at some point in time, we may want to take on debt for certain projects. We talked about possibly paving and whether, he didn't, he couldn't give us a specific answer on that. He said, "Well, you got to be careful with paving because generally you're going to finance that out for 10 years, and you always think your roads are going to last 10 years, but they might not." So it's not, I'm not saying he's got the answer on paving, he's been there, and he has, and he has that experience. There would be additional fees in the event that we issue debt, and that's far down the line. We'd have to get bond counsel, et cetera, but again, this is an area that he's very fluent in. If we need him in that regard and the pricing is set up in there, and I think it'll be a while before we do that, but that's additional service in addition to the $12,000 annual, basically, retainer. They, his MAS Financial currently represents 30 cities, most of them in Ohio, including Barburne, Brexville, Solon, Youngstown. They also represent the city of Pittsburgh. I told them we wouldn't hold that against him, although some of it, maybe that's a plus for some folks. Okay. Anyway, as I mentioned, they're listed second on the top 10 Ohio Municipal Advisory Board, so I, we think that he's a perfect fit for us. We think he's just what we need. The price is more than right, and I ask you to consider that. I think the sooner we get this on board, the sooner we start this process. I asked him how long it would be before he'd be in a position to give us that initial, those initial projections and the five-year plan, and I want to say around 90 days, is that what he said?
90 days.
Something in that range. So we kind of like to move on this, but we'll take as much time as you need.
Thank you. And I'm super happy we're doing this. I have been asking for this for quite a few years, and it's a, it's a good first step for us. Any idea why he's so much cheaper than the other people, based what the other people maybe were offering?
He's a, they're a smaller group in terms of his personnel. His feeling was, it was interesting. He said, "Hey, interview, you know, here's the list. Interview these other people, I'm sure you're talking to them." I went back and looked at the other proposals, and maybe a little bit more than we need. And maybe we don't have, you know, I think it's a little different, once we told him that we're about a $12 million operation, you know, that's a different deal than presented for a city who's got a $40 million budget. And so, and he said, "This is the, this is the format that he's comfortable with." I think that, you know, probably a better part of his revenue probably comes from when they actually issue the bonds. When you see the fee structure on that, it's pretty standard fee structure, I compared it with the others. So I think maybe that's the bread and butter.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I did some, some research on, on this gentleman and the company. Seems to have great credentials and involved in a lot of things, not just with this company, but with municipalities and school boards and other organizations. So he does have a wide range of experiences. I feel eyes on me, like people have things that I say or question, so anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I can echo your comment there. I know, before I got on council, this is one of the things I was wondering why they weren't doing. I know we've talked about this numerous times, this is really going to help, you know, kind of provide a roadmap for future expenditures. One of the common themes I hear is, we're kind of, we're okay now, but down, down the road with lack of development and stuff, we may be strapped, and this guy will help us as far as forecasting our needs and so on. And then we, you know, as far as the bonds, I'll make sure this is clear, that this isn't bonds that will go on people's taxes. This is internal bonds that we pay just like you would on a loan. So it's really just a different way, it's a more up-to-date, modern way of looking at how to operate your municipality and future potential bond ratings and loans and stuff like that, just to make sure that the service is going to suffer. And we can still do that within our current tax bracket.
I think it's prudent to be cautious about debt, and I know that's not what we're talking about now. And given that especially, I mean, I have a financial advisor for, for my future. I don't know why the city who has a much more expansive portfolio wouldn't be thinking the same thing.
You know, what gets a great point today.
Well, and we happened, I was thinking about this in, like, a couple of years ago, is when we sat down with the other groups. And also, for example, just for us to actually get a loan on pieces of equipment with our bank, one of the bigger banks that have government entities, we have to have a municipal advisor. They will not just give us a loan without that first piece in there, and they deal with that person, and, and through that person on the eye. Even, it's not even a CPA issue, it's a, it's a municipal, a registered municipal advisor that can do all of the, they can do all the study for the, you know, how much it's going to cost and the depreciation and the years that it's going to go out, and they need all of that before they will even loan you money for equipment at some of the bigger banks like Chase and Huntington and that kind of thing. So it's, it's something that, especially if we're going to take on debt, which of course, you know, I'm, I'm very against taking on debt if we don't have to, because we found out from other mayors, apparently, at your mayors, some of your mayor's meetings, that when, when he tells them we don't have debt, they're like, "You're lucky." So we, I'm glad that we've been able to take good care of everyone's money, and hopefully we can do that in the future. Definitely not want to put ourselves in a bind, so I'd want to have X eyes looking at it and make sure that we're doing all the things that we should be doing.
Any other comments, questions? Are you comfortable waiving three on this?
Yeah.
We will certainly ask to waive three then, and we will move on to Resolution 24R62, a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund and declaring an emergency. And this is our standard moving of funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund, an amount of $250,000. Questions, comments? Waive three, closing the Finance Committee meeting at 6:12.
All right, next we're going to move on to our Streets and Drainage Committee. Mr. Almond?
We'll open up the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:12 PM, starting off with Resolution 24R60, a resolution authorizing, yeah, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreement with Parent Asphalt Incorporated for the installation of an asphalt pad at the Service Department for the salt storage bin and declaring an emergency. So if everybody remembers, we already bought the roof and the concrete blocks for this. That was coming out at about $60,000 for that, and then this project for the asphalt face would be $20,000. We allotted ourselves $100,000 for this project, which, if this is the last piece, that project would mean we're just over $20,000 under self-governed budget, which is good. Is there any other, because I know this came up at a different time than, I see it says revised proposal. Is there anything else that needs done to the salt bin, or this is the last piece?
Where did we say you brought it?
That would be the last.
In the proposal for Parent.
That would be the last major piece. There are other pieces that, like brackets and things of that nature, that are, that are going to cost probably, I, there are other things that we bought that are in at least around $5,000 just for, because they're putting the blocks together, you know, we bought the blocks, but then you guys are putting blocks together, so they have to anchor, and those kinds of things. So they'll be incidentals aside from those, but this is the last major piece of it, yes.
And I don't know why it's your guys, to tell you the truth. I'd have to ask Brian, I'm not sure what he asked, how he quoted it the first time, but I don't know, the answer is, I'm sorry.
It could have just expired or changed.
Yeah, most likely, yeah, that's a guess. There were two other bids. Cardinal Asphalt was $17,900, and there was a, let's see, Sable was at $19,936. But unfortunately Cardinal was not, couldn't pour until late November. And didn't feel it was prudent to wait that long, we need to get the salt in the, in the bin. And Parent, apparently it can start within two weeks, so that's why we're suggesting the...
This says it expires in 10 days, and it's dated the 16th of September.
I saw that too, but I'm confident that, well, we wouldn't ask you to act on it tonight, and I'm going to think that one, that number.
Got it. When do we usually get sold? What does usually come in, when we order that?
I swear, I got it.
Yeah, you got it. It comes during the summer, because you have to order it earlier in the year, and then you have to be able to take the whole amount, or, or part of the group has to be able to make up the difference if you don't want it all.
And it's crystal ball stuff, right? Are we going to use it, or are we not going to use it?
Yeah, and the thing is, I mean, you can work to the winter, but now you're in line behind everybody else.
That's right.
The price is a lot higher.
Yes, you can get it.
You're locked in the price, you're locked in the price, which is part of this, you leave it like, yeah. Like you said, you, you have to wait because everybody else is usually in the same situation, so.
You're waiting during the time where it might be continuing to snow, and as the mayor mentioned, you got to, you got to forecast what you're going to use for the upcoming year without even being in the winter yet. You're doing that in the summer, so it's kind of a moving target, and then if you forecast too much, you got to have a place to play.
Yeah.
So. I think Brian told me everything was over, and we needed to take possession of it by December.
Yeah.
So we're under a bit of a deadline.
Are there any other questions or comments on Resolution 24R60? I'll move on to Resolution 24R61, a resolution ratifying a three-year labor agreement between the City of New Franklin and the local 348 of the Teamsters Union, declaring an emergency. I think the mayor, we haven't talked about that thing.
Well, we were sort of hip-deep in the negotiations, and, and there was an opportunity for discussion outside the bargaining room, somewhat similar to what we heard from Police and Fire, in a little different format. You know, there, we're well aware of the equity increase for Police and Fire, and that those contracts got settled rather quickly. And, and settling that financial piece then took off the table a number of other, I'll call them housekeeping things. Maybe they weren't, you know, things that might be bothersome, might be troublesome, they want, who wants this, we want that. Spent a lot of time, a lot of attorney money, quarreling about those things. The notion was, if, hey, if we can agree on this, and there's, as you see in the proposal, there's a couple of other pieces, but nothing too dramatic in addition to the wages. And there was a suggestion that the, that the Service Department would likely approve this if it was offered. So it was offered, and they did. They accepted it. So this would wrap up our union negotiations, and as you can see, includes a $3,000 equity increase. Again, we're talking to comparables, and this is, I think, maybe the year of, of comparables and equity. This is an opportunity for us to get, I think, with this piece, and we have to handle the non-union pieces, and I think when we do that, we're going to be in a universe now where, you know, depending on what we do with, with the non-union pieces, where we're at at least above the low end of comparables. And I think that's important, it becomes more important every day when we talk about not just, well, not just retention, but attraction. Because one thing everybody hears, it doesn't matter whether you're in the public sector or the private sector, it's hard to find people who work. And it's a very competitive process, and you need to be competitive from a pricing standpoint. So in any event, we think that these, this brings us into low to mid-range of comparables, and, and the Service Department has indicated they would accept it, so if council approves it, we'll have the, we'll have the contract with the Service Department.
Any other comments?
I think we've been very lucky to have such great Police, Fire, and Service. But you're all pretty equal when you think about saving lives and being important. Can't you look at any of these?
I like when they cloud the roads.
What's that then?
I like when they cloud the roads.
I do too.
Love them, love those guys.
I think it's important to keep the guys who got it, because I just had a posting come down that was up to three weeks, and I got 12 guys that applied for it at a decent, decent position. So it's, it's hard to get people who've been coming to this field anymore.
Yeah. So level of expertise, you've got to know the area to be able to do well to. Any other questions or comments? Sounds good. We'll close the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:19 PM.
All right, last committee is going to be Safety Committee, Mrs. Jones?
Resolution 24R63, resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for tasers and related equipment for the New Franklin Police Department and declaring an emergency. I talked to the captain this afternoon about, right now we have 16 units that we purchased in 2016, and they're still using those, but we're going to order eight, and then everybody will share. This comes, the added equipment is actually training for all of these, they had improvement. The older ones, the reason they are not as good, I shouldn't want to say it's good, but everything's more efficient now, and so the different equipment that goes on in the old age does not work for many. So that's the reason, and he wants to save money by ordering eight now and using those and leaving them from ship to ship, which I thought was a good idea. And the lead time on this would be December, if we okay this tonight. They had the money in the budget, and they have a lease that's going to be coming up pretty soon. They'll be finished, and so this would act in that lease would cover the first cost. And it's a five-year lease, if I remember correctly, and the cost of it is $10,915.67 per year. And they like to use the tasers because you can save a life, not only the person's life, but the person they're trying to arrest, which I thought was very good. Does anyone have any questions?
I think it's fair to note that by going with this 60-month lease here, we're actually saving almost $18,000 by committing to the five years.
I'm sorry, yes, we are.
So we're here saving $3,500 per year.
And it looks like we're doing everything we need with that, all the extra equipment plus the training, and I think that's important. Because sometimes we don't get that all the time.
Is this a similar type of agreement that we had with body cameras?
I'd say yes.
I thought that she had negotiated a better rate.
Yeah.
Did you get anything to add, Paul?
No, you said it all.
Does anyone have a question? Nobody, you have a problem with waiving the three?
I don't know. Trudy, I agree with you, if we're reaching for tasers as opposed to service weapons, that's...
Well, there's something to each line, because you never know who you're going to try to arrest. It might be someone's son, someone's daughter, and they may be on drugs, they may be drunk, and they know what they're doing at that time. So a taser could save their life, and it could lose their life, and I think that's important. So I'm going to ask to waive the three, and I'm finished at 6:21. Yes, the record's three.
Yeah, when these come in, we're going to, we're going to be looking for somebody to test these off.
Having said, "Handing fires."
No way, no way, easy.
All right, so with that, we're going to call the word of the meeting for October 2nd for the City of New Franklin. Would you join me, Mitch?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nomination under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, would you call real, please?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Shaper?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Styles?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Almond?
Present.
All right. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes for the public hearing?
Present.
Articles eight and 14. Kelly? You have a personal session?
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I have a motion to approve the regularly scheduled meeting minutes for September 18th?
I will make the motion.
Kelly?
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the financials for August 2024?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Kelly?
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, passes seven to zero. Now we're entering for our public comments. If you would, please state your name and address and keep your comments to the foreman, please. Seeing no comments, we'll move on to our exciting agenda. Kelly, Resolution 24R59?
A resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into an agreement with MAS Financial Advisory Services LLC to serve as registered municipal advisor for the city in declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to raise, waive the three readings on Resolution 24R59.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 24R59.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Resolution passes seven to zero. Resolution 24R60, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Parent Asphalt Incorporated for the installation of an asphalt pad at the Service Department for the salt storage bin and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Streets and Drainage Committee. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three.
Second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
That was just the way that they're going. Make a motion to adopt?
Second. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. Resolution 24R61, Kelly?
A resolution ratifying a three-year labor agreement between the City of New Franklin and local 348 of the Teamsters Union, and declaring an emergency.
Perfect. This resolution was also assigned to the Streets and Drainage Committee, and I'd like to make a motion as well to waive the three for this one.
Second.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Resolution 24R62, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing a transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 24R62.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 24R62.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. Resolution 24R63, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for tasers and related equipment for the New Franklin Police Department and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings with Resolution 24R63.
Second.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24R63.
Second.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We got the third readings of any legislation. On to our favorite part of the meeting, the mayor's vote.
All right, all right, as long as you keep saying that, my goodness sake. Let's see. First of all, update on some of the sewer and water projects to the ODNR Visitor Center. We had a Teams meeting with several members of the, of the ODNR Columbus staff, and also with Aqua Ohio. And the ODNR indicated, showed us what their plans were for a route for the sewer and the water. So the good news is, there's going to be sewer and there's going to be water there. Whether or not the sewer line is going to be placed in a position that's helpful to us as far as access for the Tudor House and perhaps prospectively for St. Luke's, we're still talking about that. It looks like the water line will be, so that's a work in progress. And I'll give you more information as it, we're going day to day, having conversations with them. They're under a little bit of a bind timeline on this thing in terms of their funding and how soon they have to commit, and they've already got some design work done, and we're trying to convince them that, I think the water, for sure, we're going to be able to get it in a position
we're gonna be able to get it in a position where we can get it close enough to the Tudor House, and Tudor House is gonna be able to use it. And whether or not we can make that adjustment with the sewer depends on a variety of different things. Some of it has to do with the bigger sewer project and has to do with the environmental study that's required to plug into the federal funding. And that's true not only for the three million dollars up on ninety-three, but also for the nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Tudor House project. So it's a bit complex, but we're on the bottom. And we're making good progress, so I'll keep you posted.
Yes, with the water line, possibly the sewer line, will that be running down Rollins a little bit?
There's a couple different options. The ODNR had suggested, the route they looked at would go through the State Park Road. It would be on the State Park Route. It would come out that little access area. And then, actually, it would originate at the corner of Renninger and Roble, where the water line is right now. So it would come from there, it would go past a Zellray plant, it would go into the park, and then up to the road. So we had Aqua on the line, and Aqua would prefer, at a minimum, to go down Rollins and come in Latham. And that gives them at least access to a few more customers, and that's helpful for us. And then I had a further conversation on Monday with Aqua, and they might even consider a different route. If they come from Catalina, as you know, it comes in Coleman and Catalina. If they came down Encino and went up and then to Withers, it's five hundred feet shorter, so it saves money. It gives them access to a few more neighborhoods, which would be kind of nice. We've got people down by the lake that have been looking for the water for quite some time. So that's part of the discussion we're having right now. And I think it's gonna be one of those, I think we'll be able to convince ODNR at least one of those two routes, so that we get it down Latham and we get it over to the two routes.
So people that are on that route would have the opportunity to tap into water?
The option entirely, that's important, yes. Yeah. And that's a big deal, because you're not paying the assessments to get the line down there, and so...
Right.
They're funny, so they'd be there if they wanted.
Excellent.
Yeah. All right. Ninety-three, that's still a work in progress. I'm having, I've had some conversations, as a matter of fact, further conversations today with Mike Quinney from San Terry Sewers. As you know, that's, you know, that's sort of been a shifting scenario that at one point in time, for a longest time, included a pump station on Vanderhoof, a very expensive pump station on Vanderhoof. And then the conversion of Zellray, packaged pipe, to a pump station. And then through the course of time, and maybe it was a good thing it took as long as it did, they said, "Wait, no, we don't need two pump stations, we can just convert Zellray." The flow on ninety-three, it's gonna be on ninety-three, it's gonna go from Vanderhoof to Grace, because that's where gravity stops. And the initial plan, when they're gonna do the Vanderhoof pump station, that flow is all gonna go to Vanderhoof and down that direction. Since they're not gonna use a Vanderhoof pump station, currently, the sewer is at Renninger and ninety-three. It serves McDonald's and all those neighborhoods back there, that apartment complex. And so now the plan is that the line, this line on ninety-three then, at least for Renninger, then will plug in there, that'll go to Zellray, and then be pumped from Zellray. While we're trying to get this last little one point eight million, the thought has been that maybe we start with this phase, since this phase is not dependent on a conversion of the pump station. And that Zellray plant can accept up to thirty-two thousand gallons a day, and they're only at fifteen thousand right now, that they do this piece first. And if they do that piece first, then that opens this section for the potential development. It puts the sewer here in ninety-three. And it advances the clock for us on that. So, and it makes sense for a couple other reasons. As I've been saying, the only thing harder than getting federal money, than getting the grant, is actually getting the money. And that's okay. You know, we're already better at it than we were when we first started. So it may be to our advantage to not, sort of break this project into smaller pieces in terms of the three million that we have. And that little stretch right there is close to that three million. So that maybe we start with that piece. We're gonna finish the environmental study probably March or so. And when we get the, and within thirty days or so, we hope to have those funds secured. We don't have to wait for the rest of the funding. They can go out for mid, you know, they can start construction by end of summer. So that's what's going on in that respect. But we'll keep everybody posted there as well. But as you know, we got some people waiting, you know, right over here at the Dell Store. They check in with me every six months. And it's no secret, they purchased a couple properties, and they intend to have, to make it a nice Dell Store with another dining option and twenty, thirty, forty jobs. So it's just a matter of, you know, when it's available, you know, those kind of things are gonna start to happen. All right. Waterline development, as you know, the public hearing that was scheduled for last Thursday, the developers asked us to continue that again. And they indicated that they're going to submit some revisions to their preliminary plan. We don't know what those are, but it's anticipated, it's fair to say, we anticipate that it's gonna involve some reduction in density on that project. I don't mean to speak for them, I'm just saying that, that's just, I think, I'm comfortable saying that much. I don't know, I have no idea of degree of what those plans are gonna be, but we'll wait to hear from them in that regard. Speaking of public hearings, there will be one tomorrow, planning and zoning at six thirty. And this is on the conditional use application that we filed jointly, the city filed jointly with Mason's Cove to confirm that the types of events that have been conducted at the Tudor House from time immemorial are consistent and can conditionally be approved to continue at that venue. And as I indicated before, I think it's just a matter of, well, just what I said, confirm it. And let the planning and zoning consider that, hopefully they'll grant that conditional use. Certainly, that's a piece that we need before Mason's Cove is gonna undertake completion of the event center, although we're hoping to break ground on that before the end of the year. So that's gonna come to reality. So that's tomorrow at six thirty. Eventually, depending, no matter what planning and zoning does, eventually that'll come to council for a further hearing and then action by council on that. The audit report, I'll let Susan speak to that, to the extent, whatever extent she wants to, the preliminary draft is in. I think, I don't know if we're undisclosed or not, since it's a preliminary draft.
It's not final, it's down, it's done, but it's not final. So, and certain parts of it, since it's not finalized and up on their website, are gonna open to the public, but yeah. If you have any questions, Susan.
All right, but I mean, the bottom line, when you review it, is we're in good financial condition. Another thing that was, I think, relevant to note, you know, we talked about being about a twelve million dollar business, and oftentimes about three million of that is grant money that's coming and going for different projects, paving, et cetera, et cetera, that are hard revenue stream from local government funds. And as we've said many times, it comes from property tax and it comes from income tax. That's the bulk of it, about nine point five million of that. And it's almost exactly equally divided between the two, the property tax and the income tax. So it's, it's just, I think, a good indicator of how one hand feeds the other. You know, that we heard a lot of today at the state of the county from County Executive, I mean, Shapiro. And one of the things that everybody's very excited about is that the City of Akron and Summit County has garnered this about a fifty million dollar grant as a polymer hub. And I guess, and they got another four-year, fifty from the state as well. So that's close to a hundred million dollar project to advance polymer science and production related to that. And there's, you know, we think there's, you know, discussion at that time, this is the kind of thing that's gonna create jobs, this is the kind of thing that's gonna bring young professionals to this area. And I think that it's fair to say that we have a community, you know, nobody wants to see Walmarts and heavy traffic, et cetera, you know. It's fair to say we're a bedroom community. We got more undeveloped land than anywhere. Maybe there's room for a few more bedrooms. And it's a nice place to live, and people know that. And we have the amenities, and we have the park, and we have the tow path trail. And we got a new school, and all the school districts have new schools. And so I think the timing maybe is favored in this here as we look for that, you know, the kind of bump in revenue that we're gonna need to stay in the financial condition that we are. So, you know, on that note, I think that maybe, in the not-too-distant future, maybe we consider a workshop just on those kind of things. You know, where we're going and how we want to get there, and what's the comp plan say? You know, some of it needs to be confidential. There's nothing in the works right now. I told you, we heard from at least one developer who wants to do some residential, and they haven't got back to us at this point, but we're gonna hear more. So we want to be in front of that, and I think it's a really good thing in terms of trying to maintain, basically, the rural character and the character of who we are as, you know, as a bedroom community, but making sure that we keep getting the rosebud. All right. Oktoberfest, Sunday, October thirteenth, noon to six P.M. at the Tudor House. Visanada, they'll be there. The polka band, and there's inflatables, and there's gonna be some kind of train ride for... The, we thank Grace Church, they're coming with the hate riot again. And so that's just a great event. I know you folks, most of you guys will all be there, and so we encourage the public to come join us.
Will the pierogi lady be there?
The pierogi lady will be there.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we got some food trucks in addition to that. So that's a great event, we'll have a lot of fun out there. I wanted to note, and maybe this is the last thing I've got, Brousne McDowell, Irv Sugarman, who's been our law director for the last seven years, is, was a partner with Brousne McDowell Law Offices. Brousne McDowell has now, I put merged, but I think it's more of an acquisition, Retzl and Andrews. These are both longtime Akron law firms. So Retzl and Andrews has now acquired Brousne McDowell. And Irv goes with, you know, that acquisition. He will be, he will put together a new retention letter for us. We still certainly, I certainly want to keep him as our law director, but we'll execute a new agreement, I'll have it for council's approval, and it'll be, you know, the same, the same basic provisions. There is, there is, well, there's two issues potentially. You always have to be careful in any situation with the law firms, and I know Eric knows this because he's in the business and he's with Retzl. And when a new client comes in, before a law firm will accept that client, they do a conflicts check. And they make sure that they've never, you know, that they're not representing the other side in anything that this client might bring to them. The Atkins PLX Holdings is represented by Jason Dodson, who's a member of Retzl and Andrews. So written into this agreement with, you know, with Brousne coming over is a provision relative to that. And that provision is that Irv will not represent the city in any matters relative to the waterline development. Now, we already have Jason Butterworth on retainer. You know, I don't think he's built us yet.
No.
He's from Brendan, Manon, and Diamond, very fluent in this area. We had him specifically onboard in the event that there was gonna be any request for tax increment financing. So we have an attorney from an unrelated firm, already familiar with the issues relative to that. I don't know that we're gonna need, but, you know, to what extent we're gonna need legal advice relative to that. But as we do, it'll be through him, it will not be through Irv. The further agreement is, if differences arise to the point of litigation, then Retzl and Andrews will not be involved either. And the general scenario of that would, would come to pass is, as the application moves through planning and zoning, as it goes to council, if for some reason there was an adverse opinion or a decision that was not favorable to the applicant, the applicant always has the right to an administrative appeal through the Summit County County Police Court. So nobody suggested that it ever reached that point, but I think it was proactive to say, "Listen, if it ever reaches that point, Retzl will not be involved, would not represent them in any litigation." So I think there's enough layers of, and I think there is. I can tell you that these law firms spend a lot of time and money making sure that there's layers protecting from an ethical standpoint. So I want council to be aware of all of that. It's, they're also, and I don't mean to speak for you, Eric, and I'm going to, but no. I think they also considered, you know, is there any issues relative to Eric? Because he's employed by Retzl and Andrews. I don't see any whatsoever, and I don't think your firm does, and so... But by way of full disclosure, so as soon as I get that new retainer letter from Irv, I'll do a resolution presented.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Sugarman has been excellent for us and certainly on our side when we need him to be, and just done a wonderful job. With the merger of these two large firms, should we possibly consider looking for a different law director? Because being part of this, you know, large firm in Akron, they're going to have a lot of clients, and the opportunity for conflict could be greater, you know. Would it make sense for us to just have an attorney, just, you know, move to a different firm so that we don't run into, you know, lessen the likelihood of running into these conflicts?
It's a little bit of tricky business. And because, to get somebody, it's a relatively specialized area of law. So you don't normally have an attorney who just hangs out a shingle, a sole practitioner, who is conversant in municipal law. So I think generally, you're gonna find yourself with a larger firms. I guess we'll have to wait and see, Mr. Cox, that's what I would say. I don't, I'm not anticipating it, that we'll run into that situation. You know, the situation, Brousne was a pretty big firm as well. How many attorneys have you brought in with you guys?
We're bringing many people.
Yeah. So, and they had, you know, wide range of clients, and we didn't run into that situation yet with them. And they've been practicing forever in Akron. So I guess, I think even on a case-by-case basis, we can always go out and get separate counsel. But I'm actually a little bit, what's been nice about Brousne, and I can't remember the way Irv put it, it, you know, it increases his, you know, his army of attorneys. When you have, when he's part of a larger firm, for instance, we've been working on, we have to put together a, an agreement with Mason's Cove relative to the building of this event center. And to define each, the city's rights and Mason's Cove's rights and responsibilities, et cetera. Again, it turned into be a technical area. Retzl had an attorney who does a lot of this work, Jim Dixon. So we were able to reach out to Jim and use him as well. Well, with the army that Retzl has, we even have a broader bench to choose from if and when we get into specialized areas. And that's really the benefit of having a law director who's part of a larger firm. so, but I, we'll be sensitive to that as we go forward. Okay. That's all I got. Financial report?
As you know, our audit has been filed. Thank you very much, Mr. Cotts, for coming by at the eleventh hour to do a signature for the post-audit.
I'd walk away from a baseball game.
Oh, okay. Well, we greatly appreciate it. Apparently, a lot of the, the higher-ups who do the review of the audit before it goes to the state have been ill, so there was nothing going on here, but we were just waiting, and then it came down to the last day for the federal audit has to be in, you know, in the clearinghouse on that day, and luckily, like, Jim came and signed off so that we could get it in there. So that was, we were, we appreciate that to get it timely, because they're like, well, if it's in the next day, you'll, you know, you won't meet that requirement, and it's like, but I didn't have anything to do with it. So, but he made it so that we could, we could get it in. We even had another problem where you have to, I had to okay it in the clearinghouse, and that was the day that Verizon phones were down, and so to get a text or, you know, the authentication, you know, the second, I was like, not getting it, so I had to actually finally do it from home when Verizon came back up, so. But we got it all done, and thank you everyone that helped out with that.
And I'm not spoiling the game.
Yeah. You should, I know they sent out all that information to all of you, it has a management letter and then the audit itself, which is a part of the financial report. Please feel free to look through that. If you have any questions, let me know. The management letter usually gives our recommendations of things that doesn't go on the audit, it's not a finding, but those are things that they say, well, you need to do this. For example, we had one person who did not, not on this council, but previous council that did not make their timely public records training, so, and that, so they put that in our management letter, so things like that. But if you have any questions, you can go through all of it, and I can give you the blow-by-blow of all of it, but basically, yeah, we're in a good, we're in good position, and when we need help and we don't know what to do, we call, we dial the auditor's office and say, okay, how do we do, make this happen? And they give us the answer in written form, and we can, and they'll stand by it. So, we're in good shape there. As you know, next week, we're going to start working by meetings on the budget, so now that's where we're turning our time to. I have sent out all the spreadsheets, and I'm telling you all this because the people that are here, that were here before, know what these spreadsheets are all about, but you that haven't been. We have spreadsheets that basically go back about five years, there's five years of the actual expenses for those years, then there's two columns, one for last year's appropriation and one put in this year's appropriation, so that you can look kind of at a glance and see where we've been, been, what we've been doing. And what'll happen is, basically, each department, as we go and have these meetings, will discuss what they think should be in those, you know, what, where those appropriations should be, and what they're going to be spending on, there'll be discussion of that, and then that'll get filled back in. Those who don't come to the meeting will get, will still get the spreadsheet, but after it's filled in. The people that come to the meeting get the spreadsheet beforehand. We also, I also pass out the Certificate of Estimated Resources, which of course does not have the ending balance, they're just, they're just a estimated ending balance, but that's what we have to go by, we cannot appropriate over that level. And then you also will begin, you'll also be getting a spreadsheet for the revenue sources on, that shows about a five or six-year period of history, so that you'll know where we get our money from and how much we get, so, so that you'll have all that. And then you will have time afterwards, after this, to go over that while we're here, we can, you know, set it, do it during a committee meeting to go over anything you have questions on. But it was really nice last year, Kevin and Jack were there, and, so they were in on all of the discussions, so they could, they could help present that and answer people's questions as well as I could, so, that was really nice. Lastly, I had the privilege of being able to go to the State of the Zoo address, which was last week at Akron Zoo. It was, it was really great being able to go, meet some of the board members and some of the employees. I sat at the table with their human resources coordinator, which was very interesting, we got to talk about all those kinds of things. But they also gave an update of their plans for the next ten years. And one thing that, I'm not talking out of school, because they're going to put this stuff on, they're going to make announcements of this pretty soon, next year they're getting giraffes.
Giraffes.
Giraffes. They're adding on a big, like, the four or five acre after, and they'll actually be, you'll actually be set up to be done, and all those kinds of things. So it'll be pretty cool, pretty cool looking that they're adding, so I was very privileged to be able to go. And that's all I have for now.
Do you know how many acres a giraffe needs? What is the requirement for how many acres per acre?
I am not, I am not a giraffe specialist, but I know that their paddock there will be about four acres, and then they will actually have an indoor arena where they keep them in the wintertime as well as their own stalls, just so you know.
Also, getting back to the audit, you mentioned that a previous council person possibly did not complete their, their duties on a timely basis. Would there be an opportunity for you or someone to do an audit of council as far as what, what our requirements are, if we've met them, or what we're still doing? Because I know I'm confused on what I need to do, what I need to do, because it just seems to be so much, and share that with all of us so we make sure that, especially for next year's audit, that we're up to date on everything as we should be.
And just to let you know, it's, the one that, obviously, we encourage everybody to take the ethics training, because it'll only help you, but the one that you were, that you have to take is, is for the, is for the public records, is, what is the short-term of it, what do they call it?
Sunshine laws.
Yes, sunshine laws, thank you. That one you have to take once every term, so, and that, and it's very easy to do because they, you can, sometimes you can go to training and they have it included in that, but they also have it online all the time, so it's easy to do. But I will definitely check with Diane and have her pull, I think you're all up to date, but I will have a double check that way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. All right, anybody having new business?
Hi, June. I want to mention the farmer's market and thank everybody for the help, and actually, I was going to work with Judy Williams and Terry, I'm going to screw your name up, honey, Posey? Did I say it okay? And they were wonderful, but I have to thank the city to let, they let us use the property, which was fabulous, and they made those beautiful banners. Katie, I think, did that, they were just gorgeous, and they put those up for us, and we would like to do it next year, and we're asking you right now for the same property use.
That's beautiful, and I will tell you, I had a breakfast meeting this morning at a restaurant downtown, and the waitress told me how much she enjoyed the farmer's market. Yeah.
A lot of people, we had so many people that came, and one of the vendors, I am going to share this, I shouldn't, but I will, one of the vendors, I don't know if you guys remember, but we did this about maybe ten years ago, maybe twelve, down at Sparkle Market. They allowed us to use that space. He was a vendor that came back, he was at the farmer's market at Sparkle. And I have to tell you, the produce is fabulous, how they do it, I don't know, but I bought something, I think you did too, Terry, I mean, every time we go home with food, because it was fabulous. And then I know that Kelly came up and bought everybody, she bought out that one vendor because they needed it for Brian's party, I believe, but that was so thoughtful, we appreciated that too. But we really all had a very good time.
Well, I told her, I said, well, you know what, we're trying to get more vendors. She goes, well, it's your first year, yeah, so we know to grow. So, it was nice to get that totally unsolicited.
And we are all thankful for the popcorn that's been delivered to us every week, bless you.
That was my pleasure, I.
I was intrigued.
I got all the burns to prove it. I'll get to hang out Wednesday.
Anybody else have any new business?
I got a couple of things I want to bring up. One, I had a resident reach out regarding the article about the, Article eighteen fourteen, some of the changes, and they were concerned about parking RVs, boats, stuff like that in driveways, and it mentioned that the, in the article, that they couldn't do that, and actually, the text says that you can in the driveway, you just can't in front yard. So I had that conversation, and as, in case somebody else is watching this, you're not parking the driveway. Another question I had was, you know, we were just talking about the water line that Aqua ran, you know, the existing water line. Is there a way we can get a count on the number of residents that's tied into that and then the number of businesses? Just out of curiosity, I just wondered, out of the possible opportunities along that path, how many are taken advantage of?
Yeah, I'll see what I can find.
That'd just be good information for us to have, looking at future opportunities and what the acceptance would be of that.
All right, I'll ask them for that, Dave. Anybody have any new business?
Couple of comments, you mentioned about the sewer line and the, I'll call it the elimination of the pump station at Vanderhoff. So if that, that would have been gravity going down Vanderhoff to the pump station, so does that now take all those people in Vanderhoff out of that equation for the possibility to tie in sewer?
Or the, yes, it does, and at least county's perception of that was, the way they put it was, the people in Vanderhoff would be happy that they don't have to tie it.
Okay. And how will that work? Because I was under the impression that the line was put in, you know, when they were repaving years back on Manchester Road, that had a grade set to it, where it was already smoked towards Vanderhoff, so is that section of pipe now from, depending where they, you know, drop down, because it's going to be Renner or wherever they drop it down, is that section of pipe now useless, or will they do a switch there and then?
I will leave that to the engineers, but they have concerns as to whether or not there was proper foresight at the time with those lines were laid.
Yeah, because I was, my understanding, that whole line was put in with a slope in it, and if, they can still do it, I'm assuming they could sever that line and use that slope from that tying point heading to Zellray, use the section from the Vanderhoff as now part of the force line, if the pipe is adequate for that. I'm just wondering how, if they had any conversations now?
There have been conversations, and I, I don't know the final answer. I know that there was, it was expressed that there was some concern about whether that was a good idea, in fact, to put those lines in, so in any event, we'll find out.
Do they have to take them up in order to replace, they have to replace them, does that be done?
Well, with sanitary line, if it's not a force line, they're going to have to dig it up, because it's got to be set at a grade. So if the grade's not going to work for that application, they're going to have to dig that area up and relay it. But they may be able, if the pipes sound enough to handle the pressures, they may be able to do a swap right there and use that part, let's just say Renner is where they're dropping, use that from Renner down to Vanderhoff as a force line. So there may be a way that they can salvage that, but I'm just not, I don't know if they had those conversations or not. Last part on the new business is, I just want to say thanks for getting us scheduled for the workshop for the live meeting, that's going to be next Thursday, I think.
Yes.
And that'll be advertised in the time.
Yeah, talking to the public, we're not inviting public participation, but public will have to attend.
Yeah, thanks for getting that set up. It's just a great step towards transparency.
Agreed.
That's all I have for new business, anybody else?
We spoke briefly last week about technology for the community. I was able to reach out to the Juvenile Attendance Center for Sonoma County, and they are going to put together some names for us in the next couple of weeks, where we can develop their equipment. For those that can attend to look at it, they're going to make a Zoom meeting, so you can see via Zoom what it will look like on the outside, or the, and then you can also go in and see how it works.
Anything else, thoughts? All right, we'll close new business, now go back to public comments. Anybody have any public comments on anything they've heard or maybe didn't think about the first part of the meeting? Seeing none, closed public comments. We have a need for executive session, I believe, that's to discuss the compensation of a public employee.
Correct.
I have a motion to go to the executive session.
I have a motion to go to the executive session for discussion.
Go ahead, let the person say it.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Siles?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
All right, we're going to head to executive session, our next council meeting will be October sixteenth at six, six P M.